There is and so. Okay, so and we'll give each person one minute and thirty seconds to answer each question. And please stay within that that time limit. If you if you see me throw my hand up like this, this means please stop. If you hear a buzzer go off from Nicole, that means that she's shutting you down and we're moving on to somebody else. Okay, but you'll everything will work out all fine. Adam Seering is the first person. Adam grew up in Chapel Hill, has degrees in law and public health. And with his wife, Professor Mimi Chapman is raising raising two boys who attend University of North Carolina and East Chapel Hill High. He's an award winning nonprofit attorney with a successful career working to expand healthcare for low income and vulnerable folks in North Carolina. And across America. In our community, he's done everything from found and coached the Phillips Middle School mounting bike team. Serve on the board of Piedmont Health Services and volunteer in UNC's COVID mass vaccination clinic. The next person needs no introduction, but Karen Stegman was born and raised in Chapel Hill and has served on the town council for the past four years. She also works for the Chapel Hill based nonprofit organization dedicated to ensuring that people around the world have access to quality healthcare. Karen and her wife Judge Allison Grine are raising two children. Our next person is Zachary Boyce is a native of Fayetteville, North Carolina. Where he was born and raised by two army veterans who taught him the values of public service and community. He's the first in his family to attend college, but is inspired by the potential for the cutting edge research and knowledge that he has gained access to. Within the public university to be used for repairing the generational wounds left open in minority minorities. Communities from slavery to the new Jim Crow. As interdisciplinary scholar currently a jurist doctor, massive science and information science candidate, a devoted public servant. And the only mayor candidate who experiences inter institutional marginalization and discrimination. To an extent that only descendants of slavery endure. He is optimistic about serving the community as mayor for the next two years. As the ideal candidate for prioritizing racial equity and restorative justice in all policy initiatives. In order to propel Chapel Hill and the great state of North Carolina into a meaningful racial reckoning. And phase of community healing required to ameliorate the generational traumas of colonization indigenous genocide and African shadow. Slavery that still impact marginalized communities today. Oh, Vimla. Has been living in our in Chapel Hill Carver community since nineteen eighty five. She's raised her three children here and they are now forty, thirty eight and thirty four. Vimla has been active in the community with public access media. Hunger relief, supporting the arts and theater in our area. While also running a restaurant that is a community gathering place that serves wholesome local food. She's best known for her labor justice advocacy and outreach with food and supplies for refugees and others. Dr. Hung Pan Gu is a resident of Chapel Hill for twenty seven years. She's a research scientist in medicine and data and data science. She's organized many cultural and youth civic engagement events around the Triangle community. Our next council member candidate is Ms. Paris Miller Fouchet. Is an educator and grassroots advocate for restorative criminal justice, affordable housing and environmental safety in our community. She's on the board of the Marion Cheek Jackson Center. And empowerment and serve the town's reimagining public safety task force reimagining, I'm sorry. And works at the Interfaith Council for Social Services where she works with marginalized members of our community. To advocate for issues that impact their lives daily. Paris and her husband are raising their son Amir. And the historically African American neighborhood, north side, and they have the great in the great grandmother's house. And Paris has also professor of St. Augustine University. Mayor Pam Heminger has been serving the Chapel Hill community for over thirty four years in a nonprofit capacity. As an elected school board chair, Orange County Commissioner and on several town boards. She is most proud of her her food for the student program, over one point five million meals served this past year. And the recognition of the Chapel Hill nine and the other town civil rights history. Yeah. And Ms. Camille Berry is a North Carolina native, mother of three young adult children. Active alumna of Wesley Wellesley in college and immediate past president of Chapel Hill Carver Sunrise Rotary Club. Camille and her family moved to chat to the greater Chapel Hill area when her former former husband began working at Carolina Friends School. As a college counselor. All three of their children attended and graduated from the Chapel Hill school system. The first integrated school in the in the area. True to her family's echo, her alma mater's motto, the motto of Rotary Camille has found great purpose and service to her community. Okay, now that we know who everybody is, so we didn't receive bios from from everyone. I know. Mr. Beasley, you we don't have your your bio. If you could just take a minute to introduce yourself and tell us why we should vote for you.
All right, sorry about that. I'm Robert Beasley, a North Carolina native. I graduated from UNC with a degree in sociology. Lived in the triangle most of my adult life. Was here in Chapel Hill and Carver when I was in school and moved back maybe four or five years ago. My background's primarily in IT. I've worked for a company out of RTP for over twenty seven years. And my work experience has been in technical design, business design, governance, standards, strategies. I've done a lot of things over over that time and I think it would it fits well with town council member. Okay, sorry about not sending that.
Oh, that's okay. So is are there any other candidates on who didn't submit bios? We don't want to miss anyone. Okay, there are being none. Let's do the three mayoral candidates first for this first question. If you are elected or reelected in your case Pam, what would be your priorities? Pam, you go first.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you for hosting this forum. Ooh, that turned pink here. Also, I want to say thank you for your help with spreading the word about COVID and keeping our community safe. The NAACP was a great partner in making sure we got the word out about the three Ws. About practicing other safety habits and then getting people vaccinated. So we're really grateful for the partnership. My three big priorities is we've got to get moving on our climate action plan. We have a limited window. This plan needs to do a lot and it needs to be equitable. So we need to move forward with that. The next plan is to keep us moving forward on our economic development so we can take the burden off the property. The residential properties and give us the dollars to do the things we care about. Which are affordable housing or green spaces and all the things that go with that. And the next big priority is really working to make a whole community. We need a vibrant community. We need to be a place for everyone. We need to include our arts. We need to capture that spin off energy coming from downtown off of UNC campus and grow good jobs here to help our economy. The climate action plan is full of all kinds of things with transit. Getting people on multimodal out of their cars, reducing the carbon footprint, working together in unison with businesses, people, everyone in the community. Moving forward UNC as a partner in that too. So those are the things we are working towards. But the downtown together is part of that plan as we try to revitalize our downtown, which is the backbone of our community. We are doing things to spruce it up, to make it more friendly, to make it more walkable, to make it a place people want to come to work. We have a lot of people that come work in our community that can't afford to live here. And part of this plan too is to be in partnership with the university and UNC healthcare to make plans on how we get our workforce to be able to live here. Be part of this community and how we have good jobs here. So the people who do live here are commuting out every day, adding to our carbon footprint and creating the traffic woes. So we can have the dollars when we move towards more commercial to help here and we can get those dollars. We're seeing it in our sales tax numbers. They've been through the roof. But again, I'm proud of this community for moving forward during COVID.
Thank you. Dr. Hungpin. The question is, if you are elected, what is what will be your priorities?
Okay, well, thank you very much for organizing this forum. I have been working with the with NAACP throughout the pandemic. I have organized the the PPE distributions in the donations. In many of the events and both in Chapel Hill and in Raleigh, Apex and WCP. So I think it is a bond that ended the connections that we had built during the pandemic and I have been invited to many of their events as well. So I think for when we through the pandemic that we have seen. That there are significant challenges that associated with our minority in the black and brown communities. That we have seen the the running away disparity that both in economics and in health and in 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 their. The the well beings that through the the economic opportunities. So I think that for the the recent IPCC climate change report. Also shows that there is a significant disparity in our black and brown communities with regard to the environmental justice. The the black brown communities usually are the ones that are most likely to be flooded. They're the ones that have less tree canopies and the the environmental protections and during the Chicago.
Dr. Hungpin, you you can we tell us what your priorities are?
Okay, so the the three priorities that I'm going to focus on if I'm elected as the mayor of the town. Is first, I'm going to make sure that there 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 is housing and the economic equity in our economic plan. In we need to make sure that our housing policies is not is not going to be only benefiting the the investors. It's not only going to be building the luxury apartments. We need to make sure that the the people under thirty percent. They will have a place that to lead to live. They're not going to be struggling with housing instability. We want to make sure that all the people living in that in our black and brown community was will have the opportunity to move to move up economically. And we want to make sure that the second priority is we we need to make sure that our economic, our climate policy. Will take care of of the environmental justice issue. We want to make sure that especially for the black and the brown communities. That they are our policies and they are the 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 retrofitting projects. To make sure that our black brown community were most vulnerable to the climate change will be protected. And the third, I want to make sure that we're going to be invested in our community, which means that we're not only building houses, but we need to build the communities. We need to make sure that what especially in the in the black and brown communities that they are going to be like. The playgrounds, there are going to be connections that the the bike and the walk connections to work and to school. And to make sure that they will their their communities is going to be invested with with the the fundings. So that everyone has an opt has an opportunity to move up. So I think my policies is is based on these three priorities. The the equitable economic development, environmental resilience and build a strong community. I think they're most relevant to our black and wrong. Black and brown communities and that's when these are the ones that I'm committed to.
Thank you very much. Zachary Boyce.
Everyone. So I think what distinguishes me from the other candidates for mayor is that I'm a law student. Right now, I have access to legal databases. I can read about any legal proceedings that I want. And that includes the different administrative roles of our legal institutions, including the office of the mayor. The mayor of Chapel Hill is someone who is using the resources that are here. In a way that focuses on the issues of their platform.
So what are your priorities? What are your priorities? You only have a minute.
So for me, I think affordable housing, equitable access to COVID nineteen resources. Including financial resources to supplement. Losses and income and. Sustainable energy projects are my three main focuses. I'm happy to be here and I hope you'll consider how my access to these this institution of legal knowledge could serve in the role as mayor this fall.
Okay, for the the council candidates, we'll start with Adam Seering. Adam, if you are elected, what are your what will be your priorities?
All right, well, first, thank you very much for having this forum and inviting all of us. I really appreciate it. And I have to say, this has been an educational experience as a first time candidate for any office for me. In Chapel Hill, I thought trying to pass the Affordable Care Act or expand Medicaid was a hard political fight, but. Since that got nothing on the discussions we have here in Chapel Hill, although we're a little bit more cordial, I think down here. My three priorities are this. I think first of all, the reason I got into this race is I spent my life in Chapel Hill and our woods and our streams and our. You know, forests and our parks. And I really love that those areas, just like so many of us do. And I would like to preserve this. And unfortunately, I see that in, you know, some parts of the of the town and our town and forests and. And parks that we're not doing that. And so I'd like that to stop. So that's that's number one. Number two is, as I've, you know, been through the process of this campaign and looking at the different issues is. Really affordable housing. I think we have several projects like J Street, like Trinity Park. And like Homestead, which we're getting going on a little bit and or we're getting going on, but we could go faster on rather. That we could move more quickly on so we could build more stuff more quickly and I'd like that to happen. And then third, you know, we talked about economic development and I had the. My fourteen year old was still willing to travel with his dad this summer and we drove around the country and we were riding our bikes and hiking and doing his camping route. And I saw a lot of towns that were similar to our size town who had done a lot with their trails and their green space. And use it to attract visitors and business development in the town. So towns like Mayan in North Carolina, Belmont, North Carolina. Bentonville, Arkansas, Boise, you know, so those are the really the three things that I'd like to focus on and I look forward to learning from my fellow council candidates and and others about what other parties we can do here in Chapel Hill. So thank you.
Okay. The segment.
Good evening. Thanks so much for hosting this forum. Thanks to NAACP. Thanks to so many people on the Zoom. This is really great. If we were in person, I think we'd have a small fraction of of viewers. So this is fantastic.
Something to be said about Zoom, right?
Right, there is. There's there's something there. Anyway, so my three priorities, if I am elected. I want to work, continue to work on making Chapel Hill a more sustainable community. And there's a lot of things I think we've done in the last four years, but we there's more to do and we all know that. And so I think the the three areas that really we could really make the biggest difference. Is climate action, as has been talked about already. Mary Heminger talked about how, you know, the council has. Approved a climate action plan and we're ready to implement it. That's critical. Our climate response. Affordable housing. I'm glad to hear that. Adam, thanks for doing well with affordable housing and I agree with him and but we need to do more. There's a a huge need and this council has done more for affordable housing than any council before. And we're ready to keep going with that. And then connectivity and transit, as has been talked about. We have too many cars on the road, too many people commuting out, too many people commuting in. We need people out of cars. We need to expand our our green spaces and our greenways, which serve. Both as multimodal transit and also green spaces where we can be outside and walk and exercise and be with our our families. So that's a really big priority for me. And I'm going to bring up the topic of a bond to help fund those. We have a great plan for it, but we don't have the money. So we need to speed that up. So. It's really important, I think, to see the intersectionality between all these issues and how we need to work together to move the town forward to be the sustainable, vibrant, equitable. Chapel Hill that I think we all want. Thanks.
So my name is Vimla Rajendran. It's truly an honor to be included in this forum. A place at the table is definitely an honor. Thank you to NAACP and all the community members who are present right now. My priority definitely would be to make more walkable and bikeable. Areas, especially on Franklin Street, our main area downtown does not have complete streets. And secondly, I would look at all development from here on from an environmental justice perspective. Hold developers to a strict standard that's legally binding so they abide by more pervious surfaces. And also when affordable housing is built into a development, to not put them in a corner close to a major highway. Or near the railroad tracks, but to be blended in. So affordable housing in particular, I would hope that I can take a initiative. To make that possible for at the county level even working with local, other local governments. Chapel Hill is not an island. And I truly believe that we need to work with local governments in a way that we can actually put more resources into our school systems. So that the achievement gap is. Narrowed or rather closed altogether. Those would be my priorities.
Okay, thank you very much. Paris.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to the NAACP for holding this forum. I'm like super nervous. I don't know why, but I am. But I'm so happy to be with you all. One of my priorities, I'm really wanting to encourage more creative mixed use developments with community benefits amenities. Safety, affordable housing and transit access by advocating for expedited review of such projects. With this expedited review and granting zoning changes faster. You know, we can maintain affordability of projects and ensure the best quality of development and green space balance. So that we we have a livable, affordable and green communities. And collaboration is going to be really important priority for me, you know, collaborating with the county and the school board to ensure. That we are developing communities and amenities to allow our young people to thrive. Investing in our young people is an investment in ourselves. And that is an investment that that I believe we can all agree is is well worth it. And really building out our entrepreneurial ecosystem. Can do this by encouraging the development of community gathering spaces where business owners can collaborate. And blow off some stain and and really come together to innovate. Thank you.
So with the with your with your role as a board for empowerment. You also are working with the Midway Business Center. That a lot of people don't know about that we want to start talking more about it in the community. The Midway Business Center and helping, it's supposed to be the incubator up there with empowerment.
Yes, that's correct. You know, the Midway Business Center is centered in, you know, the historic African American community and. With that business center, we have an opportunity to fill the gaps for small business owners. We know that rents are really one of the areas of challenges for small businesses. And one of the things that this incubator center center does is it really makes. It gives access to small businesses to be able to 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 function in and otherwise be priced out of being able to to serve community.
Okay. Mr. Beasley.
Thanks. So so for me, the the fundamental issue is how the town government is operating and making decisions. I I don't really see. Strategies with plans that are listening to residents and putting the residents' needs above the developers. And it seems to me that this approach that the town is taking is undermining our values, our priorities of affordable housing. Investing in Chapel Hill's infrastructure for the future. And and also climate change and and conservation and protection of the environment. I, you know, I've only really been engaged in the town government and town council. Over the last six months, got drawn into it from a a project in our area that got me involved. And in doing that, I, you know, I started looking at these projects and, you know, hearing. Statements of affordable housing is important. We have to bond. We but at the same time, what you don't hear. Is Trinity Park gets closed down, which is over forty units of two and three bedroom housing for for some of. The more vulnerable families in Chapel Hill. And the town has a plan to redevelop it, but it's going to be the middle of the decade before it gets done. How does that happen when affordable housing is a priority? I look at things such as environment and climate change and trying to be responsible. And I find out about the police station, which is built on a coal ash dump, not the town's fault, but it was. And the town has taken some steps to put some mitigations in place to to prevent the leakage of toxins into Bowling Creek and and that's admirable. But then I find out that, yep, yep.
Your your priorities. You have thirty seconds.
Yeah, so my priorities are are to try and change the town operations. So that we are operating consistently with our strategies. We're prioritizing needs of the residents over outside interests and developers. And we're making real progress on our affordable housing, infrastructure investments. And climate and environmental protection for Chapel Hill's future, preserving our values and our identity. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Camille.
Thank you.
That's very good.
Yes, can you hear me all right? Wonderful. Thank you for inviting me tonight, along with my fellow candidates. My three priorities come from what I have witnessed lived as well as witnessed while. Working with a partner agency, a partner to the town of Chapel Hill. I worked for nearly seven years with Community Home Trust. Which provides housing opportunities that are affordable to low and moderate income households, as well as extremely low income households. Including thirty percent AMI. But my three priorities, I want to be clear, are A, increase affordable housing. And let's face it, we all aspire to have housing that we can afford. We all do. We all deserve it. Two, to bolster our economic development. We cannot achieve the former without the latter. And we need to diversify both of those. So we need a variety of options that are available. And three, undoubtedly, as we progress with those two, we are going to have to look at our green space. And we're going to have to honor. That space. I'm in it almost every day. I value it. When I make a choice, I'm sacrificing something else. We need to make sure that what we're sacrificing is worth it. What are we gaining? Those are the three that I consider tension trios because they're so intimately intertwined. There are other considerations that my fellow candidates have mentioned. These are the three that are extremely pronounced to me because of my background, because of. I faced housing insecurity. I've shared the story before, faced it for a number of years before I could advocate for it professionally. I faced housing insecurity, I've shared this story before, faced it for a number of years before I could advocate for it professionally. I'm extremely grateful to be part of this community. And regardless of whether or not I win this election, I won't stop advocating for the progress of this community, and progress is not a dirty word. It means we're advancing. We need to advance together. That is the underlying lynchpin of my campaign, is that we work together because we have a treasure trove of knowledge, of talent, of skill that exist within this community. And I think that we can do so much better if we work together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next question.
Before we move on, we picked that question to go first to give everybody a little bit more time to introduce themselves. But the questions that are coming after this are a little bit more specific, more focused on certain areas. So I'm gonna, I'll be keeping time more strongly on these ones. And I'll raise my hand when you have about thirty seconds left, so that you can go ahead and wrap up. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start with the council this time, this question. How have you supported historically marginalized groups in your community? And we'll start with Mr. Beasley.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know that I have a really good answer for that. I admittedly have not been very active in Chapel Hill's marginalized communities since moving here. I certainly have an appreciation for the need to ensure that their voices are heard. When I moved here, I rented a place that was in a marginalized community. I met a lot of really nice folks there who were struggling. And so I certainly understand the need for it, but I'm afraid I don't have a very strong answer. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, you told us the truth. That's all we can expect, right?
I'm a straight shooter.
Vimal? You're muted.
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. Have you supported historically marginalized groups in your community?
Have I supported historically marginalized?
How have you supported historically marginalized groups in your community? Like when you do your, the free food, when you help the immigrants, and when you do all that other stuff?
Well, I have showed up in the community. My first job was as a daycare worker, was in the North Side at Community School for People Under Six. I was just twenty-six years old and I had just arrived back in the United States. And so I was part of a predominantly black neighborhood and a daycare. I was there understanding the needs, the home situations of many of the students. And then North Side went on to be something that I have, a place that I have considered one where my friends lived. So I have personal connections with many of the people there. But as a business owner, on the South Side of Franklin Street, I have considered myself a bridge builder between the North and the South. I understand the history of streets that have not continuously connected over Franklin and Rosemary. And I have participated in the Where Stories Make Pathways, the Hidden Voices Group. And I have studied the history of North Side and showed up. So that's one of the ways. And then with the refugees, I have hosted refugee families at my restaurant and gone out to see them and provided food and household goods. And I still feel like there's more of a need to do that. But I have lived an outwardly focused life that tries to meet felt needs for communities as such.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen?
Thanks. So it's hard to answer this question in a minute and a half. But in my career and my volunteer service throughout my life, I've worked on supporting underrepresented, underserved communities. But for me, that's really one of the main reasons I ran for council. I really believe that one of the key roles of government, especially local government, is to intentionally and actively dismantle the systems and institutions of inequity that are part of the legacy of the government in this country at every level. And I think if you're not working to actively dismantle those systems, then you're perpetuating them just by, you know, continuing to operate under the status quo. So that's been a driving force for me in all of my work on council. Some examples are the work around policing and reimagining community safety that I played a lead role in. Briefly, another example is the Criminal Justice Debt Fund program that Councilmember Boyce and I brought to council together. That is a really innovative program to help this disparate impact by court fines and costs. It's a fund that helps folks in the community. It's been so successful that Carrboro has now joined, the bail bond justice program has joined. We get calls from other jurisdictions asking to, how do you do it? We want to replicate it. So those are just some examples. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen. And Paris?
So I currently work at the Interfaith Council for Social Service, where I work with some of the most vulnerable members of our community to meet their basic needs. And at IFC, I am the BIPOC Training for Action Progress Advocacy Team Lead, where I'm developing the next generation of Black, Indigenous, and people of color leaders to engage in and serve our community. I also serve on the Board of the Marion Cheek Jackson Center, as well as Empowerment, Inc. And at the Jackson Center, we are committed to honoring, renewing, and building community in the historic North Side, Pine Knos, and Ten Top African-American neighborhoods of Chapel Hill and Carrboro. And to really engage the power of civil rights history, the struggles and strengths of generations of long-term residents. And I'm the liaison to the Orange County Community Remembrance Coalition, helping our community to understand racial terror and advancing justice. And with empowerment, I'm on the front lines of advocacy for housing justice and to work towards providing housing rentals for Orange County residents earning at the thirty to sixty percent AMI. I've been appointed to the Town's Reimagining Safety Task Force, and I currently serve on the Community Police Advisory Committee, where I work with community members, town staff, and council members to work to save a more equitable community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Camille?
Right, I was just here writing down, hoping that I haven't forgotten anything. But professionally, when I arrived in this community, I'm a fundraiser by trade, and I worked with United Way of the Greater Triangle, helping to secure resources, needed resources, for marginalized groups. And then most recently, working with Community Home Trust, my work there. Again, amplifying the work that is done, amplifying the need, securing the resources. And then as a volunteer, Piedmont Health, I serve on that board and have been on that board since 2016. 2017, I became a Blue Ribbon Mentor, an advocate. And I work one-on-one, don't work, this is pure joy. I get to visit with a young lady who, we started her fourth grade, at the end of her fourth grade now, and Hot Meal Deliveries, Transplanting Traditions, which is a nonprofit that provides native diet that they can grow for immigrants. And Hope Renovations serve on that board, Workforce Development for Women, Learning Construction Trade. And before, Community Center in Seawickley, Pennsylvania. When Blacks could not attend the YMCA, they had this community center. And I still am in communication with them. So that that population still has a place where they feel welcome. They continue that even though they can join the YMCA. Thank you.
Mr. Siri?
Thanks. Yeah, I have had the privilege of my professional career of working to expand health coverage and improve healthcare for low-income and vulnerable people for my entire career. So seventeen years at the North Carolina Justice Center, working to expand Medicaid, pass the Affordable Care Act, multiple different issues. Now I'm at Georgetown, I advise groups like the Justice Center all over the country on how to be more effective in expanding coverage and helping our lowest-income members of the community. Here, you know, in North Carolina, I've sat down over the years, again and again, with people facing bankruptcy, you know, facing incredible medical debt and, you know, helping them change the policies that put them in that place. And specifically, you know, in just in our community, I always often think about this. And in Charlotte, we had a policy where the big hospitals in our state would put liens on people's homes, low-income people's homes, in the lowest-income communities that they serve. When these folks came in through no follow of their own, they were sick to the ER or to the hospital and incurred big medical bills. And this was taking value out of people's homes and out of people's lives and out of generations of people in these communities. And it was my privilege to be able to sit down and help change that policy.
So you were serving on the, did you serve on the Piedmont Board at the same time?
Prompted me that, yeah, Moses Carey got me to serve on the Piedmont Board. I was nice to meet when Camille and I met, and we found out we share that. I haven't for a while, but that was a nice connection. So that's been a privilege too. It's fantastic organization.
Hungbin?
Yes, well, yes, well, I have been serving in the community as a volunteer and a board member of nonprofit organizations for many years. I think I started my whole community engagement starting as a volunteer. I remember that when I, when my kids are still at school. I'm a member of Family Crisis Network. So it is that network that I try to help in the people, well, the both the parents and the kids in the refugee community. They're the ones that are in the extreme low-income community. And almost anything that happens to them becomes a crisis. So like when they have a car accident, when one of the family member getting sick, or when someone had lost their job. So we have done lots of work, you know, the Family Crisis Network, trying to help the refugee community. And during the pandemic, I have organized multiple PPE donation and the distribution for the NAACP, for the empowerment, for porch, for IFC. Hello? Yes.
You have twenty more seconds.
Oh, okay. Yeah, for IFC. So I think not only in Orange County and also in the Raleigh and Apex, in the Triangle area. I think that has really made a big difference in the protection for our most vulnerable communities. And when the vaccine comes out, I am the strong advocate to vaccine for the Hispanic and the Brown community. I have organized the food donation for many of those vaccine events.
Okay, next, okay. Mia Heminger?
So one of the most exciting and rewarding things for elected official is to be able to not only level the playing field, not only making community feel connected to their own community, but righting the wrongs of the past. We were able to have a group come forward and share about the Chapel Hill Nine in my office. And I put together a task force, the worst name ever for a task force, the Historic Civil Rights Commemorations Task Force. But what came out of that was an opening of our history to shine a light and to acknowledge the bravery and the historic efforts of people in our community who made a difference in our community. And out of that came the Task Force Timeline for the Civil Rights Honoring of Howard Lee, Women of the Movement, and the Chapel Hill Nine marker that will be there forever. And to get this done before we've lost those voices was a huge undertaking. Other promises this town had made commitments to the Rena neighborhood that they had not fulfilled. I came in and made sure that we got those sewer lines in place that we were committed to do. We'd already worked on the water and other things. I have worked with the Duke Energy Home Saver Program for the neighborhoods to be able to have those energy-saving devices and benefit from climate action plans as well. And we have our BIC program, Building Integrated Communities, where we reach out and learn about our community and communicate in languages and ways that they understand that make them feel more connected to our own community. So I enjoy this part of my work. It is the most rewarding, is helping those voices that don't get to be on center stage all the time, come together and make a real difference as part of the community.
Mr. Voice?
Hello, everyone. That's just like incredibly ironic to hear Mayor Heminger because instead of brokering the access to the office of the mayor, you would run for a fourth term, given that you've had three consecutive terms in a row. I'm going to talk to you all about what the law says in the Charter of the Town of Chapel Hill about the powers and duties of the mayor. There are two enumerated sections under the powers and duties of the mayor. The first says that the powers and duties of the mayor shall be those conferred by the charter or by general law, together with such others as may be conferred by the council pursuant to law. The mayor is just one voting member on the town council. So they have to be able to collaborate and to administrate the guidance of the discussion that the council is having in order to prioritize any sort of public policy project, whether it be related to sustainable energy, affordable housing, you have it. The second section says that the mayor shall preside at all meetings of the council and shall have the right to vote on all issues before the council. The mayor shall be recognized as the official head of the town by the courts for the purposes of serving civil processes and by the public for all ceremonial purposes, and shall have the power to administer oaths. The mayor is the principal representative of the council in relationships to the federal, state, and other local governments. So the point is, is that the mayor administrates over a policy lab of sorts. And if we're going to embody the celebration of the marginalized cultures that we are seeking to center in our community, there's no better way to do it than to allow someone who's from a background that has never been here before, a chance to administrate.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Next question. We got everybody, right? Okay, next question. Racial profiling is an issue in Chapel Hill. How do you plan to address it? We'll start with the mayoral candidates this time. We'll start with Ms. Hungbin.
Yes, racial profiling is an issue. I think that is a part of the bigger picture of racial, the race-based discrimination. I think we have seen data with regard to the police policing. And we have seen the conversations about at school discipline. How the students are being disciplined is a lot of times is based on their racial profiling. And I think in our town's practice of, well, I would, so far in our town, we still do not have the represent, our managers or our leadership does not represent our town's overall, our community. And there's no Asian-Americans that has been promoted to the manager's level or above. I think a lot of times that when we are looking at those issues, that we are, when it comes to that we are, when it comes to both the criminal justice practice and also how we are going to educate our kids to how we're going to promote the people into the leadership position. I think we're all seeing that there are marks of racial profiling. And I think that our town needs to be a leader in that regard, which is, which makes the, the, the the I D E training even more important.
Time.
Yes, okay. Pam, next, let me, let me read, let me read the question. Racial profiling is an issue in Chapel Hill. How do you plan to address it in the next term?
Yeah, so we held a town hall in two thousand and seventeen that was eye opening for me. We learned a lot and we made some adjustments. Now we have a reimagining public safety task force that has brought real solutions to the forefront and thank Paris for serving on that and Karen as well. And others of you out there that served on that. We are going to be discussing some of those options on Wednesday this evening. We've also hired our first D E I officer. And she's been amazing so far. Our employees get gear training, they get racial equity training and we are getting them better training and holding our police and public safety officers accountable. We now keep stats, we get a quarterly report. We get to see what's going on. We get to see what kind of racial profiling may or may not be happening in certain situations. And we get to review that information and make those changes that are needed to be made. It's the keeping of the stats might seem rudimentary, but honest to you, we find out what's really going on because that's where the numbers show up for us. But also in our customer service, in our building and working with groups and doing our outreach. We are doing a much better job and going to, but we have a lot of work to do. And that's why we hired our D E I officer that she could help inform us how to do a better job. We're even training our transit drivers to be more racially aware, more culturally aware, to interact with the public better. So we do have more work to do, but we're, we're very open and determined to do this work.
Mr. Voice.
The question, please.
Yes, racial profiling is an issue in Chapel Hill. How do you plan to address it?
Well, racial profiling, as some of you may know, is something that exists in our interactions with various institutions in society. It doesn't just occur when you encounter some police officer, some deputy of the law who's, you know, wielding his, his or their power in a way that aligns with the foundations of the institution of policing in the South, right? You all may notice, I am of African descent and I don't get to take off my racial equity classes depending on the conversation. I think I could expand on the work that's been done by the previous administration in creating space for diversity equity inclusion officer. But I think I'd be able to work much more with them than having them work for me as a person who needs that. You know, that, that anti racist training that people who occupy institutional leadership positions insist on, on you know, extracting from a diversity officer rather than brokering that power to, to enable somebody who's equally credentialed to, to do the role to administrate, to work with that new office.
Time.
Thank you. Now we go with the, the council members. We'll start with Ms. Barry, Camille. The question is, racial profiling is an issue in Chapel Hill. How do you plan to address it?
Thank you. It is an issue. I may not have experienced it personally. Actually, I have. You may not have experienced it personally, but someone has, many have. It last summer, when we went through reckoning. I thought about my three children, but especially my son. And I thought, what can I do? And I picked up the phone and called Chief Blue. I'm grateful to the members in this group who served on that task force, who put in hours to address the situation, to assess it and to make recommendations. What I can do if elected is to build off of that, continue to work with what has begun. It exists. We may not have experienced it and I'm using that collectively. But we all need to address it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Adam.
Well, as a middle aged white guy, I have not experienced racial profiling myself. Obviously. But I understand the impact that it has on the community as far as I can from the you know, we are, we live in a time in which we are finally acknowledging this issue and attempting to address it. And so as a council member first, you know, from my background, I look forward to learning from my fellow council members and staff and advocates in the community more about what we can do. You know, as a council member, this is important to me. And then I've also, you know, think that the, I've read and think the reenvisioning Community Safety Task Force Report is great. And I think two of the recommendations there really struck me. One is as a data guy that I having that regular data coming in about what the police force is doing, how they're, you know, who they're stopping, what they're doing, who they're citing is great because we need data to be able to change what we want to change. Second is this diversion and deflection component. I think that's great. Like these minor non-traffic violations, we can stop, you know, handing out criminal citations, just warning people if we need to and trying to deflect people into, you know, the more appropriate services. So thanks.
Thank you. Paris.
Thank you. Safety is a major platform point of mine. And before moving overseas with my family's, family in two thousand and fourteen, I attended a number of meetings. I was very supportive of the initial work and efforts of the Orange County Bias Free Police Coalition whose work was committed to ensuring racially equitable and fair policing in Orange County. And as a member of the Community Police Advisory Committee, that work allows me to work closely with Chapel Hill P D, seeking to identify policies which lead to law enforcement disproportionality and unfairly targeting people of color. And I was appointed to the town's reimagining safety task force. And in the coming months, as council will be looking closely at those recommendations, I'll be able to bring my firsthand insight to those conversations and discussions. And I'll continue to participate in leading efforts as a part of the N double A C P six point law enforcement transformation agenda and the Criminal Justice Committee's discussions around progressive district attorneys who will implement more restorative measures.
Okay, thank you. Karen.
Thanks. This is a really important question. And this is a topic that's been worked on for years in Chapel Hill, as Paris mentioned, led by former chief public defender James Williams, CPAC and others. From the time I joined the council, I was meeting with Chief Blue, reviewing the reports, trying to strengthen the data, the data quality and the transparency, because you do see disparities in the data. And that's, that's a result often of implicit bias. It's not even necessarily intentional. But and unfortunately, once in a while, maybe it is, but the best thing we can do is limit the interactions between police and and the public to when that's absolutely essential. And so by doing so, we avoid the types of situations that can become, you know, quite serious. So that is why as part of our police reform, I included banning regulatory traffic stops in our resolutions. So, so we no longer do that. That is huge. That is not that's really, really forward thinking. So we're avoiding those police interactions when they're not necessary. We need to fund SORAD even more. That's the Street Outreach and Diversion Program that again avoids police interaction and focuses on services, prevention, support. We need alternatives to nine one one. We need mental health interaction and response, substance abuse prevention and treatment. All of these things that will avoid having the police to become involved when there's not a crime being committed, there's not a, you know, a serious issue. And then the police can focus on what they're good at too. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert.
Yeah, so I, I, I think that certainly, looking at the police department, a lot of the measurements that Mayor Heminger said are put in place to be able to monitor and drive policy changes. A lot of the changes in the interaction that Councilmember Stegman said, those are all good things that I would support continuing to do. One of the things that I, I think will also help is ensuring that we've got not only diversity training, but diversity in our, our police force and in our government and services. And I think as Mr. Oisi said, it, it goes beyond just the government, just the police. This idea of racial profiling, we need to ensure that we've got a diverse population and an appreciation for diversity in Chapel Hill. And this is where I think affordable housing comes in. We need to make sure that we've got housing which is affordable for a diverse population of people that work in the police force, in government services and in the private sector within Chapel Hill. And I think that will go a long way to address the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley.
Most people don't know that in the early nineties, I worked with the Center for Peace Education. Actually teaching and thereby also learning diversity. And also trying to reduce or just avoid bullying and profiling even at the grade school level. If I am elected to the Chapel Hill Town Council and wish to work very closely with Shanika Weeks's office, she is the new diversity officer. Let us as a community support her work and not make her a committee of one. And continue to do the work that we've all begun already. It's, it's a matter of lament that we did not have a diversity officer until now. But now that we have one, we must understand that racial profiling is real and it needs to be addressed. I'm willing to go through training with my colleagues on the council. It should be, the training like that should be renewed and also must be ongoing. And I agree with what council member Karen said about, you know, police reform. But there needs to also be an understanding of the need to continuously educate ourselves and I'm ready and open to that.
Okay. Hungbin.
We, we did ours already.
All right, the most important question of the evening. Community members living in the Rogers Road, New Banks neighborhood have set forth principles and guidelines for the development of their community. Do you support mixed use development on the sixty six acres of the green tract? Yes or no? Why? Or why not? Let's start with the council members this time. Mr. Siri.
Yes, well, that question is one that I, it goes right to the heart of my campaign and one that I hope that we can talk about more other than just yes or no. I think when you look back at the twenty seven years that we've had committee work done with the Green Tract and communities coming together. There's always been a consistent need to preserve a majority of the green tract and have the rest of it to be used for some sort of affordable housing development. And I totally support that. Right now, what we have is instead a plan that doesn't seem to meet those criteria. And I think we should go back to the drawing board and ask the community to come together and lead another process to bring folks out and say, what exactly do we want? Because it doesn't seem that that proposal that you just talked about is exactly what has been talked about for twenty seven years. I'd also say this, I've learned so much in this campaign and I think that the green tract, yes, I see, let me twenty seconds. It's really connected with some of these other pieces of property we have around town, the Legion Park. And what we've learned in the last two years of the pandemic and all these the, the knowledge that we have with climate change that these places are really important and they're connected. And so we're having very similar debates around town about this. And so I think things have become a lot more complicated. So I look forward to talking more about this than in the minute and a half we have, but thank you.
Thank you. Paris.
Yes, the report outlines the need for mixed use residential and commercial buildings that are, you know, two to three stories. A school, a pharmacy and basic amenities. And, and we wouldn't be debating, we wouldn't be debating this if these needs were expressed anywhere else in our community. I fully support Rena's ask for such development in, in the green tract. And the vote in July of twenty nine, of, of twenty nineteen. You know, I would have asked the planners from the county and the towns to do a joint presentation, really outlining all the work that had been done that highlighted the nine month community first planning efforts with the Jackson Center. The mapping our community's future. The environmental assessment report that was commissioned by all three governmental bodies. And the agreed upon resolution that the Orange County and Carrboro you know, governmental bodies voted on. You know, this was an opportunity for us to, to do the right thing and a way forward in, in building new relationships with Rena. With black and brown working class community members who suffered under environmental racism for three decades.
Thank you. Camille.
Yes, emphatically, yes, I support mixed development. First of all, how do you get affordable housing if you can't pay for it? How is that going to happen? Second of all, this community deserves to be heard and they've been heard. They do not deserve to have it pulled back and to have people go back on their word. The word was given to them that yes, this would take place. I'm sorry, I appreciate green space recreationally every day, but that does not that does not exceed the needs of this community and what was promised to them. I had the opportunity, I took the opportunity to speak with Reverend Campbell. I suggest my fellow candidates do the same and speak with others who live there, who have endured, as Paris said, three decades of environmental injustice. With the plan, we are not getting rid of all of the green space that is there. It needs to be looked at and this is how we slow down progress. This is how we get in our own way is we come up with a resolution and then we say, let's discuss it. Let's go back to the drawing board. So if I haven't made myself clear, I would like to say once again, yes, I support it.
Okay. Karen.
And I think that was very well said by Paris and Camille. I absolutely agree. I would support it. The Rogers Road community has been marginalized again and again. They've been through planning process after planning process. Promises made by governments that then aren't fulfilled. And it would be a real, just a travesty to do that again. There's a very extensive community process. The mapping our community's future is a, is a guide. It's not a, it's not a land use plan. And the, the intent, as I've heard from Reverend Campbell, from Mr. Caldwell. And the, the intent, as I've heard from Reverend Campbell, from Mr. Caldwell and others in the community, is it's about preserving history of that neighborhood. It's about preserving the community. The green tract is part of that and they want to be part of planning for its future. They want their voices to be at the table and they absolutely should be leading that planning process. It's, this has been going on an astounding long time and it is absolutely time for us to continue to move forward with full intent and, and commitment to what has been promised to this community.
Vimala?
The environmental devastation that has been referred to by Paris and Camille and Karen, the thirty years of destruction, given that it's so close to the landfill and so on. I, I still believe that the community deserves what they envision, but not at the cost of giving up the green tract. So yes, a mixed-use development that actually is environmentally just and safe for the people who live there and also maintains the tree canopy would be very important. Because, you know, getting into a plan to build and not hold the developers to their end of the bargain would lead us to another development in Chapel Hill. So yes, is my short answer. A mixed-use development would be good, but we have to count the environmental impact of the whole project.
Thank you. Mr. Beasley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm afraid I can't give you a yes or no answer because I, I don't understand the situation and all the history. But from listening to, to what folks have said, I'll, I'll, I'll say this. I certainly think that we need to put the priorities of residents over developers and outside interests. So I certainly think that the residents in that community need to be listened to and, and, and their wishes respected and prioritized. Two, before I moved back to Chapel Hill, I, I lived in an area where I had to drive fifteen minutes to get to a grocery store, to get to a pharmacy, to, to get to. Things that, living in town are very easy to come by. And so I certainly appreciate the need for having these types of businesses, these types of facilities available to a community for it to be successful and thrive. And, and, and we need to look out for that. So while I can't give you a yes or no answer on the specific, I would look at it from those two perspectives. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Hongbin?
Yeah, well, I think the question, it, it talks about a mixed-use development, but it really depends on what kind of mixed-use development it's going to be. Because this, this word has been used so broadly, almost covering anything that, that people can propose. And I had the opportunity to talk to Reverend Campbell as well. And I think he has a vision for the community and I, I, I agree with him that there, there is a need for economic development and with access to like a grocery store, pharmacy. I think these are all very reasonable requests. So if you, if, if, if you call that as a mixed-use development, then I certainly agree with that. I think there, there needs, there, the, the community needs that kind of facilities so that make the community as a whole. It's not only the houses. I think it's, what they're having now is not a completed community. So I'm hoping that, again, just like I'm, my criteria apply to many other developments in town. I think we, we need a comprehensive planning to make sure that we address the needs, especially for the Reno community, to make sure that we will address their complete needs. It's not only the houses. A lot of the time that we equate development to the number of units in housing, I really don't do nothing that that should be the trajectory that we should be continuing going. We need to build a complete community to make sure that there are connectivities so that the, the people living in that community is able to have easy access to transit, bike lanes and other connectivities so that they, they can go to work, go to school. We need to make sure that there are green spaces for them and the environmental protections, so.
Ms. Eminger?
Yes, we owe this community. Their voice has been lifted up. We spent times, we had a plan done for out there to talk about what was possible. And there are a lot of things possible, but to be honest with you, we put this community in the crosshairs of three different jurisdictions, a landfill, and denied the promises that were made over the third, three decades. It's time to make good that, of that. We need to give them the mixed-use opportunities, but we're also preserving the environment. The Headwaters tract is sixty acres. There'll be at least twenty-two acres of this green tract preserved for natural environment, which is also important for the Rena community to have natural environment as well. But the planning effort that went in to lift these voices up, to say, what do you need? How can we be part of the community? I agree, the connectivity piece is huge. We had the consultant come and say, I'm very excited about St. Paul's Amy Village as well. This is going to be a great, a place to be a part of as it develops for the future. But the voices that need to help chart the path are the voices that are there that have been marginalized for over thirty years.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Voice?
This is a good example of where understanding the role of mayor comes into play. What I hear from the candidates, my co-candidates and the candidates for council here is that while the body of the administration that has been governing, you know, shares values of, of building sustainable capacities and, and, you know, meeting the demands of racial equity, whether it be in an environmental justice setting or another, you know, another institutional capacity. We need to understand the role of mayor as one, a person who knows what research needs to be incorporated to, into the process for solving these issues. What I hear from Vimala about not wanting to sacrifice the, the green space of an area for the sake of, you know, economic development tells me that, you know, the, the mixed methods plans don't really compromise that much of an interdisciplinary analysis, including ecology and, and, you know, social sciences about, about human relationships with their environments. And that's been a, a trend in policy that prioritizes profit over people. And, and this is where understanding the role of mayor and how to administrate these meetings with the councils and these policy priorities through the council as a voting, okay.
Thank you, sir. Now we have our, our final question. We're gonna try to get to, we'll be trying to get you out of here by eight-thirty. But we have one last question that we have to ask you. And that is, how do you plan on supporting our local chapter of the NAACP in your role for which you are running? We'll start with Zachary.
I prioritize, I plan on supporting the, the work and the legacy of the NAACP, you know, as a, as a descendant of slavery myself in this institution. I am here taking up institutional space, both in this capacity as a candidate for mayor as well as in my, my space that I hold in the school of law here. Six out of seven of the North Carolina state representatives that voted to overturn the presidential election, the Democratic results of the presidential election, were educated here at UNC Law. And so it, I mean, it is an act of, of political will just to be here every day and to deal with the implicit biases that I see, that I see in the school of law that trickle down, not just in our community, but at the state level by lawmakers with the same implicit biases who hold these positions of institutional power, ignoring the term limits, Mayor Heminger, instead of allowing two minority people, you know, to come in here and to voice, you know, the, the concerns of their backgrounds. These same problems require new solutions and a new perspective. And me as the only Black person here, I think is the only one who can adequately support the mission and legacy of the NAACP in my capacity as mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Eminger, how do you plan to support the branch in the work that we do?
I'm a member of the NAACP. I read all the emails. I reach out. We have good conversations. We partner on many activities. We come together and have very serious discussions. Most of the council is members of the NAACP and/or serve on committees. I feel like we have a really good working relationship, but it could be even better and stronger. I look forward to more open dialogue about how we work together to make this a more just community. And I'm looking forward to the banquet coming up, always supporting the activities, the scholarship fundraising. And my door is always open. I've made that quite clear and had really good conversations with the leadership in NAACP throughout the years, even before I was mayor. And there are no term limits on any position in North Carolina and there are very few female mayors in North Carolina, so we'll go with that.
Okay, Hongbin?
Yeah, well, I think.
What I have to.
Can you say that again?
So what, what, how do you plan to support the branch in the work that we do?
Oh, okay. So, um, well, NAACP has been playing a very large role in our community and that they are the champion and advocates for the, for the people of color. I have, in my capacity, have worked on, have worked together on several different projects with NAACP. And I think that I really appreciate their role in our community. Well, especially in the earlier this year, in the, in the spring, when Asian-American members are being faced with violence. We, oh, the, the Asian-American communities, the, the NAACP and the Hispanic, El Central, Hispanic have organized our activities together. So in my role, in the, in, as, as mayor, I'm going to make sure that there is a strong connection of building the, the communities together. So we're going to help people from different minority groups on, work, work together to make sure that there is solidarity in our work and in advance our common goal of uplifting the, the roles of the, the, the people of color in our community.
Thank you. Ms. Stegman?
Well, I will, I've been a member of the local branch for, for many years and I attend the meetings regularly, as often as I can. I've learned so much from Anna Richards' leadership and now Donna's. And I, I listen. I listen to how we can work together, what the concerns are in the community. And I share information with members when there's topics of interest. I mean, they have so many great committees working on so many different issues. There's almost always something, but especially around affordable housing and environmental justice issues and criminal justice issues. The committees are doing really incredible work. So I see the role of the council as supporting that work, informing that work and listening and learning and bringing, bringing back information and, and resources. And I would continue to do that as if I'm elected.
Oh, thank you. Vimala?
As a person of color who owns a business in Chapel Hill that's always been a community gathering space, I hope to continue to be that gathering space for people of color, especially NAACP. As a elected member of the Chapel Hill Town Council, I intend to be working closely with NAACP and continue to learn more about the historic role of NAACP in fighting for civil rights that still the work is not done. There's advancement of that that needs to happen and I wish to learn more and understand more and work closely with NAACP in the future.
Okay. Mr. Beasley?
So I, I'll definitely make myself accessible. I value the input of what's working, what's not working, what's needed from the NAACP. I'm a, I'm a product of the integrated Charlotte Mecklenburg School System or the previously integrated. And grew up under affirmative action and in the seventies, shortly after civil rights, really became a thrust for a lot of things in, in my childhood. And to get here now, and as I believe it was Vimala said, see so much that still remains to be done and how far we haven't come. It's very disheartening to me. And so, yeah, I, I, I will be accessible and listen and try and, and, and work to address those gaps.
Thank you. Mr. Sering?
Yeah, I appreciate that and I hope that if I'm elected that I am able to continue to have this dialogue and to sit down and learn from the chapter about the history of the town, that the parts that we didn't talk about when I was growing up and that we, we talk about now and that we should talk about, the history of North Side and Pine Knolls and the, you know, the, the community that is all of ours. And so I hope even if we disagree on issues, that we can sit down and talk about them. That's one thing that's been disappointing to me in this run is that I've reached out to a lot of people who haven't been willing to sit down and talk. And I think that's an important thing to do and I, I would welcome that, love to do it and love to learn to do it. Especially, you know, there's lots of issues we could, I think we could agree on. One thing that I've been learning about is the environmental justice and how most of our big parks and protected forests in town are surrounded by our highest income communities. That's where we have our parks, our protected forests. We don't have as many around where people who are not as fortunate live. And that's an example of something that I'd like to work on if I'm elected and hope that I can be a partner. And even if we disagree, that we can sit down and work some of these issues out.
Thank you. Ms. Barry?
I will continue to be engaged. In fact, I see opportunity to increase engagement. More so than being accessible, I'm not waiting for someone to come to me. I will look for ways and ask to be involved. And in fact, I've been invited, have not been able to attend meetings because I've had previous board commitments. And I do see this as an opportunity, again, regardless of if I'm elected. As the new year approaches, I can look and see how I can make room for areas where I've not been as much engaged. I have been. You won't see me in many pictures. I tend to take more than be in front of the camera. But our local NAACP has done much for our community in the town, around the town, on campus. I've been there for some of that. I'd like to be there for more. And I really appreciate what that body as a whole has provided and informed the partners who provide affordable housing to this community. That's where I've been most intimately involved and would like to be even more so. So that's what I envision for the future. Thank you.
Ms. Mila Fouchet?
Thank you. I'm a proud card-carrying member of the NAACP and so is my nine-year-old son. And I am committed to continuing on the legacy and mission of this organization. Again, safety is a major platform point of mine and I want to continue my work with the NAACP six-point law enforcement agenda. And like Karen, you know, I want to support the work of the Criminal Justice Committee. You know, we have a DA race coming up and I want to be a part of those community conversations and information sessions regarding progressive DAs. And I live in the North Side. And I live in the Northside community, which has been devastated by gentrification, studification, and taxation. And so I will continue to support housing advocacy and justice with our community, with the Housing Committee. And if my duties as a council member allow, I will continue to serve out my term as the Branch Secretary.
Okay. Thank you all for coming out and participating with us this evening. I think that those of you who had an opportunity to listen to the candidates, you now know better about where they stand, especially as it relates to what their commitment is to the NAACP. So thanks again, and I'm going to turn it over to Nicole, so that she can wrap it up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have much more to say, except thank you for spending your Monday evening with us to all the candidates that are, are running and all of you who came to listen. Remember to vote. That's, that's the whole reason we have had everybody out here. So make sure you make your plan and figure out how you're going to vote. Early voting starts on the fourteenth to the thirtieth, and Election Day is November second. So you spent your time hearing from everybody, so thank you all so much and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Racks in your face is so fun to watch. You always. Poker with you. You give it all away.
Yeah, he says so much with his expression.
I try not to look at him.
I was like, oh my.
Where do we go?
Oh, I think, I think I embarrassed him. I'm sorry.
It'll take a lot more than that to embarrass.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you again for hosting the forum, and thanks for doing it virtually to keep us safe.
Oh, you're welcome.
Everyone appreciates that, and we're seeing better participation because of it. So that's an interesting, I mean, I know it's not as equitable as it could be, but it's interesting to see that people are willing to show up more often for me, so.
It is.
Thank you all.
Well, you know, the MLK event last year, we had, I mean, it was unbelievable, the number of participants we had. And we had that First Baptist, we didn't have a third of that number.
Yeah, it was great, and it was wonderful. It was a wonderful event. I mean, yeah, well, thank you all. Take care.
Okay.
Thank you.
See y'all. See you Saturday, Pam.
Bye, Pam.
Bye.